All right, we'll call to order the October 22nd, 2005 Committee of the Whole Board Meeting of the CUST 200 Board of Education. Ms. Hutchinson, if you could please call the role.
Ms. Ebison?
Here.
Mr. Gerber?
Here.
Ms. Colvis?
Here.
Mr. Long?
Here.
Ms. Blatner is absent. Mr. Rutledge is absent. Mr. Hamlin is absent.
Ms. Ebison, could you please lead us in the pledge?
.................................
Board, I need a motion and a second to suspend the rules and adjourn to workshop setting.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Gerber, seconded by Ms. Ebison. Ms. Hutchinson, if you could please call the role.
Mr. Gerber?
Yes.
Ms. Ebison?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Yes. There is just one topic on our agenda. It is Vision 2026, the CUST 200 Dashboard in Illinois School Report Card. Dr. Schuler, could you please introduce this?
Yes.
And share any additional information from staff.
You bet. So, we have just one agenda item for your Committee of the Whole Meeting tonight, and this is your annual October Committee of the Whole Meeting where Mrs. Murphy is going to take you through our district and school report card data. Just a little bit of context and reminder is just going to go through it. A number of your learning acceleration, as well as your college career readiness indicators that sit on your dashboard are actually monitored through those district-state report cards. So what you're hearing tonight is not only updates on some key elements inside of your strategic plan, but a number of the metrics that actually sit on your dashboard. We're certainly proud of the work that our teams have been doing over the four years of this strategic plan, especially to focus really intentionally on acceleration of learning inside of our schools and that career-connected learning work that we're doing at the secondary level. So it is our only item tonight, so please, as Melissa's going through this, if you've got questions, certainly stop and ask them, or certainly you can take notes as you go. We did try to send this to you in advance. I know it's a lot of information to try to digest, but I think the board has asked when we can to get you the presentations in front of the meeting, just so that if possible, you can kind of take a read through it and then just focus on hearing what Melissa's sharing. Last little piece that I'm going to share is at the end of tonight, after we go through all of the information off of the report cards and dashboard, we are going to give you just a little overview of where we're heading in terms of the development of the new strategic plan. That was also one of the things on your work plan for this year, and so not going to go deeply into it tonight, but just give you a process overview of what kind of our process and timeline is looking like, and then show you the points in that process where the board is going to have some very specific discussion as we set that plan. So with that, Melissa, what is yours?
Thank you, Dr. Schuler. Good evening. It's certainly a pleasure to have the opportunity to present to you an update on the metrics on your dashboard. For us this evening, I've anchored our conversation on the last three years of data. This is the fourth year of our strategic plan, and I thought it would be helpful for our board and community to see the progression of academic achievement over the last three years that we have data, and also to see what has been accomplished according to the strategies. So that gives you context for how this presentation has been organized. I do want to say there are many points of celebration tonight, and it's certainly an honor to be able to present on behalf of our school district and the hard-working teachers and our fantastic students. So, tonight's presentation is organized around these topics. I am going to spend time at the front end providing information around the new Illinois proficiency benchmarks, then I will go into math achievement, English Language Arts, or ELA achievement, strategies that have been implemented to achieve our academic excellence goals with our Vision 2026 strategic plan, and then wrap up with college and career readiness. So, the first guiding question for this evening is what adjustments did Illinois make to the proficiency benchmarks, and why were those adjustments made? So, there are two key definitions that I want to put out there that are very important to the next set of slides. The first is proficiency. And when we talk about proficiency, this is the percentage of students who've met the state-defined standards of mathematics or English Language Arts. This data represents student attainment measured at one specific point in time as mandated by policy. We're also going to be talking about growth, and this is measuring academic achievement over more than one time period. So, we're looking at progress of student achievement, and it offers a more equitable way to assess the impact of specific instructional strategies that we've put into place. So, one of the major points of change that is be put out there was actually unifying the proficiency levels, or the performance levels. And so it used to be that IAR had five levels, and ISA, which is the Science Assessment in ACT, had four levels, but they all had different terminology. So, we actually now have the same terminology and four consistent performance levels. This slide comes from one of our partners, Accra, and I think it does a nice job of illustrating the change over time with Illinois proficiency. So, all the way back in 2006 to 2012, we were utilizing ISAT, and at that point in time, the proficiency benchmarks were much lower than they are, they have been recently. And so, performance was generally much higher, especially across DuPage County and school districts. Then we moved into a change where they adjusted the ISAT cut scores, and this was because the Common Core State Standards came to be, and the expectations for students increased, particularly in reading complex text, and mathematical standards adjusted and often were moved down grade levels. And so, the state made an adjustment, they recalibrated, and because they knew that those adjustments and standards were coming, and so that proficiency benchmark changed. Then we had the years of PARK. You probably remember PARK and Smarter Balance were the two assessments out there that states had the ability to choose from. We were a PARK state, and so we had years where we were administering the PARK assessment. That was drastically different than ISAT. Students were having to read much more complex text, mathematics was lots of word-based problems, and the writing was more aligned to reading. PARK went away. We moved to IAR, which was essentially very similar to PARK, except for Illinois adopted much of what that content of that test was, and that's why we saw proficiency remain very similar. We then had COVID, and after that were the years of recovering from COVID. As a reminder, District 200, last year when I presented this data, I showcased we really had surpassed even pre-COVID performance last year. And so, here you can see 2025. This is an estimate of what the IAR proficiency looks like across the state. So, a slight tick up, but really not a return to the proficiency of the ISAT days. I just thought this was helpful. Oftentimes, we're talking about changes in performance and proficiency over time, and I thought this slide did a nice illustration of that.
Can I just ask one question on that? The uptick in '25, is that a result of results? Or...
That's an adjustment due to the proficiency benchmarks changing
Okay.
that we're going to go into.
Okay. So, it gets confusing. So, if the, in those two lines from '24 to '25, if a student performed exactly the same, they would go up? Right? Because from '23 to '24, that's an improvement in results.
There was improvement in the state, correct.
In '24 to '25, is there a combination of both in the projection, or is it just a result of change in the standard or the measure?
The only way I can answer that question is because I don't know the performance overall of the state with both proficiency cuts. So, I'm not able to actually
I understand, okay.
say that, but it's reflecting the adjustment of the proficiency benchmark changing.
Even any conversation with the state, they have made a very clear choice that they are not going to report results showing both what would have been the old cut scores and the new cut scores. So, that would be difficult to answer that question. I think when we get into our, certainly Melissa and her team looked at our results, both relative to probably what they would have looked like with original cut scores and new, and I think we would have seen progress either way. You're obviously going to see accelerated progress with the new cut scores. So, we can answer that more for ours. Just because we know the raw data, we'll never see the raw data from the state level.
Yeah, and it just, it's, that helps. It's just, you know, because we had to spend some time kind of defending, you know, because you look at that graph from 2006 to 2019, and it looks horrible. But it's really, it's because of the standard, not because of the performance.
It's because of the policy change
Not the proficiency level, the measure, right?
Right. The policy change that has happened in the state over time, and how they've made that adjustment to where they draw that line for proficiency.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay. These next couple of slides do come from ISB when they provided a webinar about how the decisions were made to change the proficiency. So, Illinois actually had the most restrictive benchmarks for ELA and math proficiency. So, you see all the states lined up with Illinois on the far end right there, and this was aligned to NAEP results. How we got here, back in 2017, when the State Board adopted SAT as the state assessment, the proficiency benchmarks they set were higher than the College Board's recommendation. And after that, ISB decided to align the three through eight proficiency benchmarks to that higher proficiency with SAT. And so, we were always operating at a higher proficiency level in the state of Illinois. So, when they went to do the right sizing and review the proficiency benchmarks, they used ACT as the North Star. So, this comes straight from ISB. This is some of the information they looked at. They looked at data in terms of what a student needs to get into college. And you can see what they listed out here for English Language Arts from various universities, and also in the area of math. They also looked at the likelihood of passing a college course based on your ACT/SAT scores. And so, you can see that here. And this is where they landed. So, this chart shows what was the old proficiency scale score line and what the new one is. So, in the ELA, they landed at the proficiency for Grade 11 being at an 18, and the proficiency for Math being at a 19. And then they backmapped every grade level from there. I do draw your attention to the actual scale score in ELA and Math. It used to be, people in my job all knew, 750 was the magic number at every single grade level. You were above or below 750 determined your proficiency. That scale score number has a lot of variance now between grade levels. This slide comes from Accra as well. I think it's really important. I actually had us run a separate document for you in your green folder, because I think you'll want to refer to this a few times during the presentation this evening. This gives an illustration of how the proficiency benchmark has aligned to national percentiles and how that's adjusted. So, the blue lines are for mathematics, and the red lines are for ELA. The dash lines are what the proficiency benchmarks were aligned to previously, and the solid line is where they are now. So, you can see previously for Math, that range went from the 67th national percentile was the lowest to the 74th percentile. And now we're looking at that range is different. It's at the 55th percentile in third grade, and then at eighth grade, it's all the way up at the 69th percentile. In ELA, you can see there was a lot of variance across grade levels in the past, where the lowest ranged from the 51st percentile up to the 64th. And now you can see there's a bit more, it's a bit more consistent, but the range really is from the 45th percentile to the 50th percentile. So, I think this is important context as we move forward in the presentation, and that's why I actually ran it as a separate document.
A few questions. That's just on that contextual info, and probably not fair of me to have not sent these to you in advance. If these aren't things you know off the top of your head, I can send you an email. I'm curious on the Slide 7 that kind of lines up with the NEAP scale, the benchmarks. Do you happen to know, since it is a global marketplace, how this compares to PISA?
Oh.
Okay, I'll follow up with you on that then.
It's a great question. I can write that down.
And then on Slides 9 and 10, the alignment with college expectations. It's kind of an eclectic mix of colleges that they benchmark. Do you have an idea as to why?
They didn't, no, they didn't. At least the times I saw the presentation, there was never context as to why those were selected, that I heard.
And then the last thing is on this slide, the shift is pretty uniform, except for Grade 8. What's the story there?
I predicted a question like this would come tonight. So, I can't speak to the exact process that was used with the educators that were a part of this work. Absolutely, there is variance across every one of these grade levels. So, mathematically, I can't give you an explanation of how that came to be, but I can say ISB did use the Center for Assessment to help validate their work when they were going through that process.
Thank you.
So, question two then is now we're really going to dive into our achievement. We're going to start with the area of math. I'm going to show you the achievement, but I'm also going to talk to you about what is on our work plan to continue to accelerate growth. So, for the next few slides for both Math and ELA, I am going to continue to talk about proficiency in the same way, with the same definition, but I'm going to introduce something else to our slides tonight, and that is a percentile. Our partner Accra helped us with this, and they gave us the percentile for the average student performance that is equal to or better than for every one of those grade-level proficiency pieces of data. So, this is an important slide, because you can see this is the 2025 proficiency results for Grades 3 through 8 in Math. I draw your attention back over to this slide that I introduced to you with the national percentiles, because when you look at the proficiency, you could immediately start to think, boy, District 200 performance is decreasing as they move through the grade levels. But you have to remember the expectations for student achievement according to the national percentile really is quite different from, you know, Grade 3 all the way up to Grade 8. I think this is helpful now. Accra was able to give us our students' percentile results. So, this is where the average student performs at or better. So, you can see this is that percentile range across each of our grade levels. So, there's really little variance. Fourth grade stands out, but there's really little variance from third grade to eighth grade with regards to how our students are performing. But when you simply look at the proficiency results, you would interpret it differently. So, when you look at it and you read 53% of eighth graders are proficient or above proficient, it's really important to look at, yes, but the average student is performing at the 68th percentile. Moving, so now I'm going to go back in time. I'm going to go back to when your strategic plan began back in 2023. This is our very first year in what our data looked like. I thought it was important to go back in time with these new proficiency benchmarks, so that you are able to understand what does this look like. So, although ISB is not giving us what proficiency looks like with those new cut scores, the state report card will not have it. Our partners at Accra were able to do that for us. And so, that's how we have this data tonight. So, back in, at the end of the 22-23 school year, our elementary teachers were just starting to use IM. We were still using ESSR funds to add those additional math coaches and interventionists. And I'll remember, we added the math coaches at the middle school level, and our middle school teachers were piloting two instructional materials in the area of math. And you can see the proficiency with those new, what would be the new benchmarks, and you can see that percentile. There was more variance between our grade levels at that point. Then, the second year of our strategic plan, our middle school was in their first year of using IM, and we really started offering training for our staff on math language routines, which really support our multilingual learners. This was for our staff who are interested in attending after-school. And then you can see the proficiency for both years, side by side, and you can see what that percentile looked like for '23 and '24. So, we did see some increases after one year of implementation. Here, this was last year's results. So, last school year, our middle school staff started using a product called XERN for the math lab. Our elementary teachers were piloting materials for interventions. The teachers across our school district were expanding their use of what is called building thinking classrooms that we highlighted for you once before. We were really focused on increasing communication and collaboration, as outlined in our portrait of a graduate. And all of our elementary and middle schools started using a new format for school improvement. And you can see certainly huge celebrations when you look across the three years, especially when you look at our middle schools. When we, and I think it's a big celebration that our eighth graders, they're at the 68th percentile there. On your dashboard, we grouped together grade-level bands to report proficiency, and so that is what is reflected on your dashboard for Grades 3 through 5 and 6 through 8. And I also wanted to be transparent with the community about this adjustment in proficiency. So, when you click on the tile and dig in and look at the historical data, we have left what we have reported in the past with those past performance levels. We have left those. But I have added a line that says in 2025, ISB adjusted the proficiency benchmarks. Therefore, the data prior to 2025 reflects the old benchmarks, and the data in 2025 reflects the new benchmarks, so that community knows that there was that adjustment.
Sorry, back a slide. Can you clarify the 54% where that's coming from?
Uh, that's the 6 through 8 proficiency.
Thank you.
I also want to highlight growth. And so, this is a really important point. So, over the, although ISB has made the changes to the proficiency, you can compare growth over time, and this is because it's calculated with a scale score, and that calculation method hasn't changed. So, we are able to compare our growth from two years ago to now, and that will be reflected on the report card. So, this is exactly the same information I have presented to the board in the past. So, we, back in '23, we were at the 50th percentile for growth. We were then at the 51st percentile. This last year, we're at the 53rd percentile, which is definitely a celebration. And when you look at how ISB codes that, that is still considered average, but we're inching up each year and looking to move into that above-average category in the area of Math. I also felt it was important to report growth by subgroup, and then this chart shows by race. So, did definitely want to point out two priority subgroups on this chart, Black and Hispanic, where we have seen that growth percentile increase over the last few years of our strategic plan. We have had a focus on making sure those priority subgroups are achieving at a higher level. And then by special population, you can also see, especially for our multilingual learners and our low-income students, a nice increase. I thought it was really also important to include how that district population has changed over the life of the strategic plan. And so, if you look at our district population, our ML population has increased by 3%, IEP has only increased by 1%, and low income by 6%. I always think it's very important to also remind you all that when we look at our comparable school districts, District 200's low-income population is 9% more than a school district, the closest school district to us. So, Indian Prairie and Barrington are, have the closest low-income population to us, but it's 9% below ours. So, I think that's a really important piece of information. Okay. We also have FastBridge on our dashboard. As we report on our dashboard, the percentage of students who are at or above the 50th percentile. So, you can see those results over the last three years reflected here. I want to include this, because this is the way FastBridge is utilized in the school district. It is utilized to, as a universal screener, to allow our schools to determine which group of students can learn within the classroom without additional support, which is considered two-over-one, and which students need something more intensive, which would be Tiers 2 and Tier 3. When research shows with MTSS, you're really looking for a healthy Tier 1 to be at 80% of students. And so, we can say we look healthy in Tier 1. Where we have our eye on is that Tier 3. Generally, the recommendation is 3% to 5%. And so, that's a spot, I'm going to talk about what we're doing in that space, but I wanted to draw attention to that. This is really important, not just for us to know what students need, but it's also really important for resource allocation. When you're talking about what kind of additional staffing is needed at a building to support the students, this data is incredibly important. Just like we have the IAR...
Can I ask a quick question? Sorry. Back on the FastBridge, back one slide. So, that's pretty flat compared to the IAR where we see growth. What conclusion can we draw from that, if any?
Yeah, this is a normed assessment. And so, when you think about that, it's really on a bell curve. And so, you're thinking opposed to IAR... And so you're thinking, opposed to IAR is scored differently. And it is in comparison to a bell curve. It literally is. As many students who reach that proficiency mark will be there. So I think that, that's one of the ways I would explain it. I don't, I don't know if there's any other extra information that would be helpful.
No, I don't know that there's any extra information, Dave. I mean, again, I think the comparison point there would suggest that, so IAR, we've seen growth. The state has seen growth, right? So I think we've moved, the state has moved certainly on that assessment. That I think is also a little different type and complexity of assessment. Certainly, our performance relative to that kind of norm standard has increased a little bit more. What it would suggest here is that, just at least in terms of what I, what FastBridge is assessing, our performance just hasn't changed markedly relative to others that are taking. So it doesn't mean that everybody's not growing. It just means our growth relative to others that have taken that assessment hasn't changed significantly.
Yeah, and I know there's just different factors. It's just like, just intuitively, if you don't know anything, you would expect them to trend similarly.
Yep.
Without.
Yeah. And you have to remember the content is different too. So the FastBridge assessment is an adaptive test. So students are getting, they could be getting a lot of below-level content, above-grade level content, depending on their knowledge base. It's going to make an adjustment. Whereas the IAR assessment is their grade level content. And so it's mastery of their grade level standards. So it is a different assessment.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. So the benefit, one of the benefits of FastBridge is beyond simply helping us identify students who need an intervention, is to look at results by growth. And so I also broke down the growth according to FastBridge for our racial subgroups. Here you can see, again, with subgroups, we're seeing increases from, based from twenty-three to twenty-five. And for context, FastBridge really says sixty percent is a goal to be looking at in a school district. So there is room for improvement with different subgroups, but we're seeing a nice uptick in our student growth there. And again, same idea as I presented before with IAR, but this is the special populations according to FastBridge. This was something that we highlighted with our administrators in August, that there is celebration on those priority subgroups and the increases in growth that we are seeing for those students. Now, all of that data is really informative to us as a school district to measure progress. And we can see, we're seeing some nice academic achievements for our students. Lots to celebrate, good growth, but there's also opportunities for continuous improvement. Here's what sits on your work plan relative to the data. And when we study the data, we utilize that to create the work plan. So every one of our schools have a detailed school improvement plan focused on math. This has been a focus for our all-administrator meetings, our math coach meetings. We're utilizing a school improvement process that's research-based and comes from EAB. Actually, I've been making my way around to our schools, meeting with our principals to listen in on the work that they have done and their individual school plans. And I've been incredibly impressed with everyone I've spoken with so far. Our coaches and interventionists at the elementary level are using a new intervention program they piloted last year called Bridges. We saw good success from that last year. And that goes back to that MTSS slide. Remember when I talked about those tiers looking a little different? This is part of that work there. And lastly, another piece of that work is coming from our partners at EAB, a study they released called Bridging the Foundational Math Gap. Is really been released because of the nationwide trends in mathematics. Although we are seeing increases across the country, they're, aren't, they aren't seeing that same level of increase that we are. And there's a concern about students moving through higher grade levels and not having strong foundational knowledge in mathematics. And so EAB responded to that from their partners and did a lot of research and put out guidance on how to address those foundational knowledge gaps. And we are actually having a classroom at every one of our elementary schools pilot this during the school year so we can determine if this is helpful for us and will support the needs that we see with our students. Okay, I'll move into English Language Arts. So again, I'm going to follow the same format that I did for math, starting with the proficiency from two thousand and twenty-five. Now, this graph goes in a different direction where you see performance going from third grade to eighth grade. The proficiency bars are increasing. And you can see with the contextualized percentile there, we actually do see an increase from third grade to fifth grade, our third grade cohort to our fifth grade cohort. But all very strong scores with the, each of those grade levels being at the seventieth percentile and above.
For when we started Bookworms, where are those kids now on that graph?
Okay, I have to think about this now. So this is our third year. So the fifth graders would be third graders. And so, well, wait, let me think about this because that's not there. No, they would have been, our current fifth graders would have been third graders at the time. So, um, but you have to remember too, when we first rolled this out in our intermediate grades, I'm going to talk about that. In our intermediate grades, they weren't doing all components. So.
Julia, actually though, raised a question that, not to take us all the way back to math, but I, but I am, I'm curious, especially as Melissa talks about just that foundational math piece, just in talking to several of our buildings. This will be the first year that our third grade kids, as they take IAR, will have spiraled their entire school career through IM. So that foundational program, they had from the, the jump, really like kindergarten all the way up through and, and just talking to, I think, some of our staff. They, they have noted the difference because it really is a spiral program. So you get, I think you get impact and advantage right away, but you certainly see the impact increase as students over time have had that progression all the way through the system. So, so I think it's good to kind of be astute to that because I do think as we, we move on, we will continue to see some impact of students that have been with a consistent set of high-quality instructional materials all the way through and, and get into those testing years.
Yeah, I'm glad you added that in because that is the prevailing comment I'm hearing when I'm visiting classrooms at the moment, stopping in, asking teachers how things are going this year. And I'm hearing loud and clear from our elementary staff, I'm seeing the impact of having consistent materials. And students are walking in the door, understanding routines because they've had that experience. And we also hear that from our middle school teachers. Our middle school teachers, because we have that consistency with illustrative math, they are saying, kids are coming knowing routines that are part of their elementary experience. I, I was actually with our ELA Steering Committee, our middle school ELA Steering Committee, just yesterday. And the sixth grade teachers that were sitting in the room made a point to say that their students have more skills than they have seen in previous years. And we're talking about very specific points that they were able to do in English Language Arts that that's different than the past. So. Okay, now we'll go back in time. So this was two thousand and twenty-three, the first year of your strategic plan. Our teachers at that time were piloting two instructional materials in ELA. And we just started our middle school ELA Steering Committee. Our growth was actually at the sixty-third percentile. I want to add context to this. You probably, for those of you who remember me giving this presentation that year, you remember us talking about middle school writing really took, was impacted by the pandemic. And our middle school team were working really hard to recover those skills. And that year, we saw significant growth in ELA by focusing in on writing. So kids who were below proficiency were performing really where they should be. And so that was a year where we just saw a significant rebound in this area. Here, moving into the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, this was the very first year of Bookworms implementation. All grade levels were implementing the shared reading part and K-two was doing all three blocks. The middle school ELA committee selected instructional materials to pilot. And so here you see at the end of that first year with Bookworms, we saw an increase in student performance and proficiency. And then this is the results from last year. Last year, you'll remember, we had our two reading coaches come and present to you about the work we were doing with Bookworms to, and it was called Enhanced Core. We're continuing that work this year. It's really working on our interventions too. Our middle school teachers piloted two instructional materials and we started a committee looking at interventions. And so here you can see how our results look over the last three years using those new proficiency benchmarks and the contextualized percentile. Certainly, a huge celebration for where the ELA performance is across all of our grades. And I also want to say our growth right there, fifty-sixth percentile. So here's what that looks like on your dashboard, the grouped by grade level bands. And again, just highlighting, I reflected this same sentence when you dial in and look at performance over the last few years. Again, we're able to compare the performance over the last three years. So that sixty-third percentile in twenty-three, we talked about why there was such a huge increase in recovering learning. And then our students are continuing to grow. Our percentile, our growth percentile is above average. So we were at the fifty-fifth percentile last year and the fifty-sixth this year. Again, showcasing that growth by race and showing you over the last three years what that looks like and by special population. The FastBridge reading results, last year when I did this presentation, I spoke to you all because we weren't very happy about the dark blue results. If you remember, I spoke a lot about the schedule for testing and how everything was condensed. And we thought that had an impact on our students' performance. So we made adjustments last year. And those adjustments, quite frankly, did pay off in terms of making sure we had clean data and able to showcase to you our students' academic results. Here you'll see the results by MTSS bands. Here is, we are, actually, I've showcased this slide multiple times over the last three weeks, I feel like, with multiple groups that I'm working with because we're having a lot of conversations about the students that follow, fall in that yellow and that red band. And what we're doing in our interventions to support those students and strengthen and accelerate their growth. A lot of work is happening with your reading coaches and even your special education staff are, are coming together with Alexis Hansen to talk about the, this exact data.
Same targets there for tier three at three to five percent?
Correct. Whenever you're thinking about, great question. Whenever you're thinking about that MTSS framework, the guidance really is three to five percent.
Thanks.
Yeah. Okay. Um, here you can look at the FastBridge results, the growth by racial subgroups. I, I do want to highlight, we are trending up for majority of our subgroups here, especially priority subgroups. Definitely have our eye on continuing to accelerate growth for those groups. And again, looking at that by special populations as well. A lot, really a lot to celebrate on this slide right here when you look at the twenty-three growth versus the twenty-five growth for special populations. Certainly some good increases there.
Um, just out of curiosity, on that, that growth, can you identify any, like, what worked? Was it just the consistent instructional materials that we implemented? Was there any other interventions that got us to that point? Because those are really good growth numbers.
A couple of key things come to mind that I will highlight. And especially in the elementary space. First, I'll talk about, yes, consistent materials. Direct, explicit, systematic phonics instruction is making a difference for our kids. Increasing the complexity of the text that our students are reading. Building common background knowledge and vocabulary, much more writing. Our students are writing daily and they're writing about what they are reading. And also in the middle school space, a really strong focus on reading and writing connection. One more thing I want to add. Our interventionist, our reading interventionist have started to do interventions that are aligned to the core curriculum. So when students, and this is in the middle school space too, we've had these conversations. So students go for an intervention. They're not seeing content that's totally and completely different. They're seeing what, what content that they see in their classroom. And that helps build a bridge, a gap and helps them be more successful. And I also want to credit our multilingual specialists, especially at the elementary level. We made a shift in programming when we moved to Bookworms and our staff started doing a lot more co-teaching. So our kids, our multilingual learners spend more time in the general ed classroom, getting their supports with English-speaking peers. And our co-teach, our special, or sorry, our multilingual specialists are there. And across the district, I've really heard that that's been a big success. And we can see that too in our data, that our multilingual students are making a lot of great progress.
Well, wouldn't, wouldn't it be a fair assumption that if you're a specialist supporting students across several classrooms, bottom line is consistent instructional materials makes it easier to provide intervention sport, support, most likely directly aligned to the skills that are being assessed. I mean, if you, if you have, I mean, without core instructional resources, you, you have interventions doing the very best that they can, but, but it's much more difficult, I think, to be targeted in skill intervention.
Absolutely. And it makes me think of a conversation we had the other day where I talked about the first year of common materials. It brings the teachers together and they're able to have stronger, richer conversations with their grade level colleagues. Then the second year of common instructional materials, what I noticed is every specialist is able to be more impactful because they're able to have, look at those materials and have common conversations with their colleagues across multiple grade levels. So before, if you think about a specialist going from one class to another in multiple grades, it was really hard to adjust to different teaching styles. But now they actually have access to those materials. It makes a big difference. So again, so much to celebrate, really incredible growth and achievement. But we are always looking to continue to improve and meet all of our students' needs. So we are continuing our partnership with Dr. Jamie Trudaly from the University of Delaware in fully implementing Bookworms-intensive interventions. We've actually identified that our kindergarten teachers could receive their own specialized We've actually identified that our kindergarten teachers could receive their own specialized training on Bookworms. Kindergarten looks really different than any other grade level. And we are going to be pulling our kindergarten teachers together with our reading staff in January to provide them their own specific training because we all know early intervention is absolutely key and especially in kindergarten. We want to ensure our staff get the supports they need for full implementation successfully. Mrs. Hansen is in her second year of working with resource teachers and looking at what's called specially designed instruction for students with IEP. Our middle school teachers are fully implementing my perspectives and I'm continuing to work with our committee that is looking at reading interventions in secondary schools. Okay, we're to our last guiding question and this is talking about college and career readiness and how we're preparing our students for a range of post-secondary opportunities. Once again, a reminder, we look at math and English proficiency for our graduating seniors. This definition comes from ISBE and it's looking at how students meet proficiency through either a course or an exam. Although we talked about the state board made a change to the proficiency benchmarks for ACT, we did not make that adjustment for our dashboard. We left those proficiency targets for ACT and SAT at where they had been defined. So that ACT, leaving that at a 22 for reading or an 18 for English and the 22 for math and the SAT of a 540, again, that was above the college board recommendations. Those were Illinois' higher standards. So we left that. This is how that proficiency has changed over time. Absolutely a great celebration. I added something new this year. I thought it would be of interest for the board if they saw all the pathways and ways that our students are meeting proficiency specifically. So when you look at this, you can see there's lots of different ways that students are meeting proficiency. Most students are making it through multiple, more than one way. So you can see that addition of a dual-credit course is really making a difference. And I want to say too, there are requirements for students to take a dual-credit course. So they have to have a certain proficiency, grade point average, to be able to take access to that course. Transitional English was the course we started last year and that made a difference for 4% of our students. You can see how that proficiency has changed for our racial subgroups. This is a huge celebration. When you talk about opening up doors and possibilities for students, this is the data that showcases that right here. And then also for our special populations. Having multiple pathways for students to demonstrate proficiency is incredibly important. So the report card this year will have a growth percentile for our high schools. This is brand new. This wasn't available in the past. This is the first year that is available. It will be 49.8 for English. Eventually, this is really going to be pre-ACT to ACT. But this year, that calculation is a combination of lots of different tests where it's IAR for eighth grade, they're pre-SAT. So it's a lot of different combinations, but eventually this will be that pathway. Here you see the math proficiency for the class of 23, 24, and 25. And you, again, I included the different ways students met that proficiency. Lots of different, lots of different pathways for our students here. And dialing in at it by race, again, when you, I really, this slide makes me really happy when you think about students and their future, especially for students from the priority subgroups. Our high schools have done a really fantastic job of finding kids and making sure we're capitalizing on all four years before our students graduate. Especially finding kids who need to take a fourth year of math. That has really changed, that this metric has really changed those conversations in our buildings. And by special population. Again, here's what that growth percentile is going to look like on the report card when it's released for math. So once again, actually very close to above average for the, for math. Advanced coursework. This is the percentage of students that have a C or higher in an advanced course or earn an industry-recognized credential. We have 23 AP courses, 19 dual-credit courses this year. And we have some students, not many, but some through TCD programming that go through the process of earning an industry-recognized credential, which means they're prepared for a specific workplace opportunity. We held study at 81% of our students earning that C or better in advanced course. But then here you see what that looks like over the last three years by our racial subgroups and by the special populations. So. Graduation rate has had little change over the last few years. Last year's group, there was 96.3%. As a reminder, our students from the transition building or that move on and continue their education and go to the transition building are, you know, part of that group that haven't fully graduated yet. Last year, I introduced a new metric, the college and career pathway endorsement. This is something that is earned by our students when they graduate. If they met the criteria set out by the state, they have to have six hours of a early college coursework. They have to have work, 60 hours of work-based learning. They have to have taken a sequence of courses. They have to have the proficiency in math in ELA. So the class of 25 had 55 students that earned that endorsement. And we have students that earned an endorsement in more than one pathway last year. So for a while, we were just getting kids through the education pathway. But last year, we had kids that went through the entrepreneur pathway. As a reminder, that's tied to our business incubator courses and then our nursing program as well. So that's our students who are going to TCD and doing work-based learning that is organized through the TCD program. Freshman on track is a metric that's been a part of our dashboard for a very long time. It predicts future graduation status. And so they have to be pass, they have to earn at least five course credits without failing more than .5 courses. So here you can see, we're really holding steady in that area. Our schools, they have this down. They have lots of systems to make sure we're supporting our freshmen and making sure they're on track to be successful all four years. What are we doing in our high school, though? We certainly recognize performance on SAT or ACT could continue to increase. And this is why we are, we administered the fall pre-ACT. So we put financial resources behind that. We always did this in grade eight, but now we are doing this in nine, 10, and 11. And in fact, families are getting those results this week. And that data is being used by our high schools for targeted school improvement work. We also entered into a partnership with Accra to utilize their school improvement platform at the high school level. This is really powerful because it allows our high school to look at growth over time, predict growth, look at data by course and data by content strands. So we can look at data in the area of like equations or all the different components that are built into math in ELA. Informational text versus literary text, et cetera. When we think about supporting our students and making sure they have a pathway after they leave us, we know that that whole career-connected learning component is so important. So we were awarded a grant by the DuPage County for $200,000. This is supporting funding for two internship coordinators, one at each building. And they have both been finalized, moving into those positions. And we're really excited to get started and working with them to scale this work and support kids. We're going to submit an application for the, for more pathways with the state, meaning that kids will be able to earn an endorsement in the broadcast media communications pathway and the marketing pathway. We rolled out our first engineering course this fall, looking to add more. And we were supporting the tuition of, it is about 200 students at TCD. So just gonna.
What does that mean? That they don't, that we pay the tuition, they don't? Is that, that's all I mean?
They, they, there is a fee that they pay, but the majority of their tuition, we, we support that.
Okay, thank you.
So some other metrics that's in on your dashboard and also on the report card is the annual summative designation. There are five different levels: exemplary, commendable, targeted, comprehensive, and intensive. Exemplary is the top 10% of schools in the state for that grade level band. Commendable is schools that don't fall into those, any of those other categories. There's lots of different metrics that are calculated together to make that designation. This pie graph shows you all of those at the elementary level and then the high school. Here are the schools and their summative designations this year. So you have six again this year. Wheaton North, I think this is year six for Wheaton North being an exemplary school. Wheaton Morinville South has earned this designation multiple years now too. Weasbrooke, this is actually year three for Weasbrooke. We have our first middle school on that exemplary list as well. We have Emerson and Longfellow. And then you can see all of our other schools are also commendable, which is a huge celebration. We don't have anyone in those other areas. The Equity Journey Continuum is something that came from the State Board of Education. We put it on our dashboard. I, it has lots of different components that it looks at. This is actually a metric the state is looking at and reviewing currently. It will know, I, I do not think it will look in the state that it is right now as they're going through that review process. But here you can see, this is what it looks like on the report card. So as I wrap up, just a reminder, the goals I had for tonight were to ensure you understood the new Illinois proficiency benchmarks, had a picture of what math achievement looks like in District 200, the English language arts achievement, what strategies we have implemented over the course of your three years and what's on the work plan this year and how we're preparing students for their post-secondary experiences. I'm certainly happy to take any additional questions that you may have.
Board members, any questions? Just one comment from me that I think that the more I've done this, the more I understand that there's not one data point. It's so many multiple data points. And I appreciate that we are very much a data-driven district and try and find as many data points we can and you really use that to inform our decisions. I'm curious if either some of the superintendent committees, if there's a, a way to communicate this within the community. So just, it's food for thought of considering. Because I think it's a complex system of a lot of different data points and sometimes we can get hung up on, on one versus another. And I think that it's important for the community to understand how much the district uses data to make its decisions.
Julie, just for clarity, so are you talking more about just understanding that like broader picture of like multiple data points and kind of the relationship between them rather than kind of indexing on one? Or help me understand that a little bit more?
I would say two things, the broader picture of the multiple data points. And two, the really point of that is just that we are a district that values data and uses that in our decision-making process.
Yeah. So, thank you. That, that helps. Certainly from an advisory committee perspective, CAC does spend time specifically on this. Dave was at the meeting last week where the, the broad topic for that meeting was AI and Jason was doing some work in that area. But one of the primers we did at the beginning of the meeting was I actually tried to articulate that, to say, hey, here, here are all of the things that we monitor. And we can, we are going to spend time on this topic at your next meeting. But if we invested deeply in every one of these metrics and tried to unpack them, it would be a six-plus hour CAC meeting, which we can't do. So, so we actually asked them to help to do some prioritization from within the data points to say, they're all connected and they're related, but help us understand what you want to learn a little bit more about as we're really prioritizing work. And, and that was, part of that goal was to kind of get them to see the, the, the interrelation, but, but to some degree, kind of the complexity of all of the, the data points. And I think they gave us some good feedback that's going to at least try to help us. So they're, they're going to get this presentation as kind of a homework point in front of the next CAC meeting. But then with a little deeper dive into some of the areas specifically that they just have a little bit more interest or curiosity around or need to understand. But yeah, I think that's, that is fair. And, you know, I think some of our other advisory committees are a little bit more like topically specific in nature, whereas this is a little bit broader. But I think we're appropriate, certainly goal is to keep building that understanding. Melissa, any other?
Any other questions or comments? Thank you.
So the very last slide, I think, just talks a little bit about discussion and planning for what we've already tapped as Vision 2030. So we've operated in four-year strategic plans. And so we haven't firmly made a decision that the next strategic plan is Vision 2030. But I would anticipate we will operate in kind of a similar four-year look ahead as we do. I gave you or put in your packet just three documents that I think are useful in context or understanding. And then I think most important, I just want to help to forecast where I think some discussion points will come to the board relative to development of that. So the first is a document I've already shared with you a couple of times. And that's just the history of where we've been with strategic planning. And if I were to summarize this as simply as I can, back when we developed our first strategic plan in 2014, that was coming out of a major community engagement process called Engage 200. A huge effort from the school district to engage across the community and say, help us prioritize what you want for the district. And, and that was, I think, really the first time that my sense was in a while, Chris and Matt and others that have been around the district for a little longer. I think that was the first time we had a true strategic plan for the district. We had lots of goals previously, but, but no true kind of strategic guidance document. And so that was really the focus in the first. And so, that was really the focus in the first set of plans was just get, to get to clarity. And one of the things that I've always said I think is important, and we've done with three consecutive strategic plans, well, I understand there's a lot of complexity. If you can't look at a strategic plan on a single piece of paper, you don't have a strategic plan, right? Like if you have a, a plan that takes 20 pages of documents to unfold, there's absolutely no way that an organization can kind of rally around the clarity of, of a plan. And so, that was a lot of the first year. The second plan that was developed really in, in 2018, called Vision 2022, we used a similar model of planning and organization, but really added in for the first time a dashboard. So, that plan not only had a set of strategies that were important, but had a key set of metrics that the board had identified and was, was monitoring. Important to note that a couple of years of that four-year plan were altered by the pandemic, where kind of our focus shifted a bit as we started to, to focus on just continuation of, of operations. And so, when we came together in 2022, coming out of the pandemic, there was a lot of discussion nationally, certainly within our community, on the need to kind of move back to learning acceleration and moving students kind of back through academic progression. And so, we developed our current plan, Vision 2026, with again, a number of the same elements. We added in the portrait of a graduate as a visioning element to the plan. I think we got a lot better in our dashboard in that second edition, your current dashboard that, that sits up on your website where there, well, there's not a one-to-one correspondence between every strategy and a single metric, which Julie, a lot of that is what you just, I think articulated, that I don't know that you can tie a single improvement metric to one data point, but there's a stronger coupling between how do we monitor and measure goals around learning acceleration, goals around college and career readiness, goals around student wellness, and SEL, goals in our operational areas, how do we more tightly couple those? And for the first time in some of those areas, we got clear not only on what we were monitoring, but starting to set some targets to drive us toward improvement. So, it was really the first time on our current plan where we started to set some very tangible, we're here, we want to get to here, which I think really again was helpful just in terms of driving consistency and focus. So, that just kind of gives you a sense of, of where we've been. Second document labeled at the top, core team, gives you, I think, kind of the best overview of where we anticipate going from a process standpoint. So, we, we anticipate operating with a core team inside of the district of administrators that are going to shepherd the process both of visioning, brainstorming, gap analysis, kind of building a plan, and then taking it through a whole stakeholder set of engagement. And so, there are some key dates on here on when we anticipate moving through those phases. And where you can see is that by, our goal was by November 1st to have that team assembled and meeting. We're going to meet that, we've got that team coming together next G, next week to, to can begin that first phase of planning. We've got a discussion planned with all of our administrators on November the 4th and with the board on November the 12th to not only relook at the timeline and the process, but start some discussion really built on, A, what are we most proud of in the work that's happened over the last four years that we want to build on? And then we want to make sure we get some input on what I would call the visioning aspects of the strategic plan. Visioning aspects, meaning portrait of a graduate, our mission statement, our vision statement within the district, right? Because that really kind of sets the focus of what we're working toward, around which we'll do that kind of brainstorming, gap analysis phase that'll happen largely through January, as we do a scan of our current plan, scan of the environment to decide both on the metric, the key performance indicator side and the strategy side, what do we want to keep, what do we want to let go of, what do we want to add, what do we want to refine from within our plan? Our goal is to, by February, to, to begin to develop kind of a draft of a strategic planning document that we can then take through a pretty extensive stakeholder feedback process. So, our stakeholder feedback process that I have not kind of laid out for you here would involve both an internal process of getting in front of each of our buildings and making sure that our staff have an opportunity to kind of review a plan, weigh in with questions and feedback, and then what I would call an external feedback process that will lean heavily into all of our advisory committees, will also include just some open community opportunities to, to come and, and weigh in, provide us feedback with a goal of having, hopefully by your, your April committee of the whole meeting, at least a draft of a new strategic plan to, to bring back to you as a board, with hopefully a goal of completing the process by summer. So, I think if we can complete strategic plan by June, that'll help us to, to stay on a cycle, I think, at the board level of specific priority setting for what would be the next year. The last sheet that's in your packet, again, is just specifically what we would anticipate with board engagement around development of the strategic plan. So, again, at your November meeting, an initial discussion, just reviewing the process, the timeline, and getting some feedback specifically from you, especially around what, what do you see as strengths in the last plan that we've gone through, what do we want to build on? And then as we move into our January Board of Education meeting, I anticipate us focusing really on kind of those three broad areas of the strategic plan and really understanding both from a strategy and an indicator perspective with some, some documents, some guidance that we'll give you to help you reflect on that. Again, what do we want to keep, adjust, drop, or add as we think about the next strategic plan? Our goal would be to bring back to a draft in April, really fueled by all that stakeholder feedback, and then again, hopefully meet a timeline of completing by summer. I, I think, well, just in kind of experience and what we've done before, I think it's important to have an open community opportunity to engage. We've never gotten tremendous participation from the community as we've done kind of open community, strategic planning sessions. We tend to get a lot more in terms of feedback out of some of our advisory groups that, that, that we've worked regularly and engaged with, will lean heavily into CAC and lean heavily into our new advisory committees to kind of help us with that just based on level of engagement. But, again, not, not kind of, all, all aspects of this, but I just wanted you to at least see an initial process timeline and, and see if there are any initial questions or pieces of feedback as we move forward. Anything major that stands out that you have concern with as we kind of look at this process and timeline?
I just have a, a quick question or comment. So, I'm looking at the, the core team members, and it's the, the admin and the principals. Is there any value in adding like somebody from the CAC or one of us to that group? Or do you think it's enough to do the stakeholder interest meetings to, to get that voice?
Yeah, I think, fair, I guess, Katie, tell me a little bit more about kind of what you're asking with that.
I guess from my perspective, and, and maybe I'm looking at it wrong, but it, it seems like having a core team that has various different viewpoints might be beneficial as opposed to, you know, a core team that has just the admin perspective. But I can also see it from a utility standpoint, it probably makes more sense to have you guys do it, but I just thought if you guys had thought through, like, is there any value in having different voices?
Have, so I think the, the, so yes, to the question of have we thought through that, certainly have. I, I think the core team is really the team that, that candidly is doing a lot of work in terms of like building documents, putting materials together, that then goes through that engagement process with those other teams. So, just quick, quick example, right? CAC, right? You spent some time on CAC, Dave spent some time previously on CAC. If I were to say, pick one person from CAC that would fairly or accurately represent the complexity of our district, probably couldn't do it.
Right.
Right? Like it, it would be difficult to do. And, and from a whole variety of perspectives, right, that they might bring, right? Like, like do you bring somebody that, you know, has been through the entirety of the system? If I had a, an elementary parent, do they have any kind of complete understanding of what the system looks like as you move through middle and high school? Probably not. If I brought in somebody that had students that went through our system 10 or 15 years ago, do they have a current understanding of it? I think it'd be very difficult to get a representative group that would sort of, kind of build that. So, I think we're better to go to CAC as a whole at a couple of key important times and say, hey, group of 37, you give us this feedback around kind of these two various stages. I, I found that better from an engagement perspective than that. To, to some degree, kind of the same on the, the board. So, I think we've built this hoping that we have multiple touchpoints with you as a group of seven to really weigh in and give feedback where we can take that feedback, reflect on it, the core team is really just kind of doing the detailed work to reflect, you know, or to build plans that reflect what we're hearing through all of those engagement processes.
Yeah, the reason I ask is just, anytime I've been involved in any sort of strategic plan, we've always used like an outside firm type of situation, which it doesn't sound like you guys are doing here. So, the core team is sort of acting in that role?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they, they are, and again, yeah, really just doing the foundational work, I think, Katie, that's actually a great way of describing it. If we were to hire a firm, pay them a lot of money to do this strategic plan, outside of the, the engagement meetings, they would be doing a bunch of the kind of detailed work and putting together presentations, documents, reflecting on things, that's what the core team is doing, right? Which benefit from my view of using a core team, doing it internally rather than having it facilitated, is that at least for us, at the end of the day, once you move past the development of the plan, and you're actually then just focused on implementing and doing this work over four years, at the end of the day, it's, it's our teams internally that have to do the work. This kind of a core team also gives us a jump on how we're building that buy-in from, you know, the 57 administrators that we have in the district that candidly have to be aligned and, and kind of focused in the same direction.
Thank you, that makes sense.
Perhaps this is contemplated as part of the stakeholder feedback, but one thing we have this time that we didn't have our last strategic plan was our student ambassadors. And I would love to utilize them as they're at the end of their journey of what their feedback is.
Yeah, I think that's great suggestion, and certainly we will make sure that's reflected. Good group of kids that can help us. All right? Okay.
But nothing else on this topic, really quickly?
Yeah.
Faith, we're going to embarrass you for a little bit. This is Faith's last meeting. She has stepped in on an interim basis while Alyssa is out on maternity leave, and we just wanted to thank you for everything you've done. You've done a fantastic job, especially with the communications on our middle schools.
Faith, I know, I know you saw those chairs. As we were in on a meeting, I thought, what a, what a perfect way, you're not really retiring from District 200, I recognize, but little mementos so that you always remember your time in District 200 as you're relaxing and enjoying, so you bet. Oh, good, you bet, good.
All right. Then there be no further action to move forward the board. An open session, I need a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting.
Some move.
Move by Mr. Long.
Second.
Second by Ms. Abelson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay, and the meeting is adjourned.